And we've got Mike with us, too?
Yes.
Yep, I am here.
Beautiful. Well, welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
Is Mark on the call now, too?
Yes.
That would be me.
Awesome. All right. I don't know why you're not all showing up, but there we go. Hello.
And John Willhamsen.
Full screen. That's a good thing. Hi, John. All right, Mike. Well, thank you so much for coming in to to meet with us. So why don't we turn things over to you so you can talk about what's going on over at the library?
Great. Thank you, everyone, for for having me. I'm glad to to give an update of the library. We have lots and lots going on at the library. So I tried to pick. I didn't want to take up all your time. So I tried to pick a couple of things to talk about that are that I think are the most important or the most pressing. Two things that we two initiatives that we have going on at the library right now. You've probably heard of the first one, our National Night Out event, which is planned for this coming Friday, August 12. And National Night Out is a the the gist of it is that it's a police and fire, mainly police, but police and fire appreciation night. And our we have a small committee of myself and Chief All and Chief Silva, Bree from the Selectman's Office, Highway Department's involved, Board of Health is involved. And we've we've worked really hard over the last month or so to to sort of bring this all together and get everything set up. And it's going to be a great night. We'll have food with a couple of food trucks and K. Katie's is providing food. There'll be music. There'll be lots of different vendors, a number of different programs, some some really interesting demonstrations and a lot more. And I think this event is it's going to be really good for for the town and it's gonna, I think, be really good for the community. It'll be a way to to build build community. I think it'll it'll give a place for residents to meet new people and also catch up with with people that maybe they haven't talked to in a while. But I think most importantly, and I think what the goal of this, the overall goal of this event is, is that it's giving a chance for the residents of Plington to interact, to meet and to interact with the police personnel and with fire personnel in in different circumstances than they normally would. I think by the nature of their job, police and fire are often dealing with people in times of crisis or in times of emergencies. So this gives them an opportunity to interact with the police and fire absent of those of those circumstances. So I think it'll be it'll be a great night. And I think an additional benefit of of this happening is that it's it sets a precedent, I think, for departments working together. It's really, I think, us coming together, different departments and figuring out all of these problems that arise during this and, you know, hammering out all the details. I think it it lays the groundwork for future cooperation between departments and will make things easier in the future. Another initiative that the library has been working that myself and the staff here have been working really hard on over the last year or so is a reorganization of our collection. So this this project has has several facets to it. Number one, where we're taking on a big weeding initiative. And what that is, is we're going through the collection, literally book by book, and deciding is is this book? Do we want this book in the collection? Has this book gone out? Are people using this book? Is this book valuable to have for, you know, a variety of different reasons? And what we found so far, and this this project is still ongoing, it's a and I have to admit, I didn't think it would it would take as long as it's taking, but it's really been a massive undertaking. What we're finding is that there is a decent portion of the collection that has not gone out in, you know, five years, sometimes eight or 10 years. So we're evaluating those those books and we're either replacing them or weeding them out of of the collection. Another part of this collection reorganization is also the relabeling of materials. And this is something that our staff here has really, really put a lot of time in over the last year, going through these these books and relabeling them so they'll so they're more organized, so they're easier to find for us and for for patrons. And basically, what that means is that every book that we have in the library will now have a a tag on it that will have the location of the book and also the first three letters of the author's last name. So when when we're pulling off holds in the mornings or when resident, a library patron is in trying to find something, it makes things much easier to find. And it helps keep things things organized. And then finally, also another facet of this collection reorganization is we're moving some of our collections around. So if anyone's been in the the library recently, they'll notice that some things have moved. Just as an example, we moved our young adult collection to a new section of the library to give young adults their own area. When we put a little, we put a PC back there and and all of their books and all of their graphic novels and things like that. We also moved some collections around in children's to make things flow better from from the, you know, the very early easy readers up to the junior series books, which are a little bit more demanding as far as reading skills and then on to the junior fiction, which is kind of the highest level. So once we're finished with that, the the whole library will be very well organized and it will it will make sense where everything is and every everything will hopefully flow together. So those are a couple of our most recent undertakings that we've had here at the library. Two of our, I think, our most successful initiatives that we've had here. Number one, and this is in in large part, thanks to John Trainer, is that our first first and now third Saturday programs are really going well. We get good attendants every time, usually at least 20 people. Most of the time, we get more than 20 people. John's been great about finding local informative speakers that have good information and relevant information for the the people who come. And it's, I think, now what's great about it is it's become a it's become an anticipated event. So, you know, people expect now first Saturday and third Saturday. They always know that there's going to be something going on at the library. And they can come and find out what's going on around town and have some breakfast and catch up with with some friends. So that, I think, is has been over the last year, has been one of our most successful undertakings here at the library. The other thing that I think has been a great success here, and I think the residents of Plinton have have enjoyed it so far, is our special collections. So over the last year, we've added a couple of different special collections to to the library. We added with the help of the local Girl Scout troop, we added a in the children's section, Girl Scout bags. So these are kits and they have different themes. One is cooking, one is animation. There's a couple of other ones that they the girls pick out items to go in these kits and people can check them out. And so, for example, the the baking kit, they have several books on baking and they have a cake decorating kit that they can use to to test out some of those recipes and some other things as well. So that's been going really well. Another special collection that we started is our seed library. And this has been, I think, considering the amount of gardeners that we have in Plinton, this has been something that is has been enjoyed, I think, by by the residents. So we got a whole ton of seed donations from a number of different seed companies back in October. And one of our staff members, his daughter took an old card catalog that we had and painted it up, made it look really beautiful. And we have that here with all all the seeds organized. And and the idea behind a seed library is that people come in, take seeds, and then at the end of the year, they harvest seeds, bring them back and for people to use the following year. We'll see how many seeds come back as we get into the seed harvesting time of year. But even if we don't get many seeds back, I think it's still a it's it's a nice, a nice thing to have here at the library. And it's been very, very popular. And then finally, another one of our special collections that we just put out a couple of weeks ago is our our small but growing library of things. So if anyone isn't familiar with a library of things, it's basically not books that you can check out from the library. So it's things like board games or puzzles. We have several other things, too. We have some lawn games for people to check out if they're having a party and they want to have some things for people to do. We have several STEM, science, engineering, technology and math kits for kids to check out and a whole bunch of other things, too. We'll be adding to that as we move into the into the future here. But that so far has seen a lot of checkout. We've been active for about about three weeks or so. Before I move on, any any questions?
Well, just that when you brought up this program and you started talking about tools. This is a this is a great idea. So more power to.
Yeah, thank you. And that that's actually one of the one of the things that I think we're going to. Right now, it's, like I said, it's growing. It's a very small collection. We do have a couple of small tools in there, like a laser laser leveler and things like that. But what I'd like to do at some point is get some things into that library that are that may be cost prohibitive for residents to buy, you know, especially if you're talking about something that you might use like once or twice a year, something like a power washer or a carpet cleaner, things like that that, you know, you may be only using a couple of times a year and you don't want to go out and spend all, you know, $200 on it. You can come to the library and check it out that way. So we're we're looking into expanding that some more as we as we go along. Our our budget this year is looking looking really good. The the municipal appropriation requirement, which is the amount of money that the Mass Board Library Commissioners require the town to appropriate to the library in order to stay certified, that number for this year was 163,893. And our budget request was just over that at 163,900. So out of that, about 62,600 or so is used for materials and the rest goes to personnel. So far, we've spent about 24% of our materials budget. Now, I know that seems like a lot in the first the first month or so, but that's pretty typical for a library because one of the things we do at the the start of the fiscal year is pay our subscriptions and pay our network fees to the Sales Library Network, which we are a part of. So, for example, we have a a book leasing program that we pay one lump sum at the at the beginning of the year, and then we can, which is a great program, by the way, we can sort of take books and send them back and get new ones. It's it's great for nonfiction books, for, you know, books with political topics and things like that, that may be popular, really popular for six months or a year, and then nobody wants them anymore. So that's our we pay our book leasing upfront. We pay our our sales network fees upfront. So our money that we use to have access to the to overdrive, which is tens and of thousands of eBooks and e-audiobooks, and also our our PC support fee. So our fee that pays for all of our IT support from the Sales Library Network and also our our magazine subscriptions as well, which is another collection that we started to to rework. So hopefully, I will have some some new and interesting magazines for people to come in and check out. In addition to that, and thanks to John Wilhamsen also for for working on this, this year, we we added an additional, I believe it was 11,500 to our budget to work on several essential building repairs that we need here at the library. So this covers things like the hot water heater, which we got replaced a couple of weeks back. The lighting and adult fiction, which is scheduled this to be replaced or to be added to this Wednesday, new carpet in the children's room, repairs to our entryway, which is the the ramp that's coming into the library and several other smaller issues. One one thing I think that the the board should be aware of is what I just spoke about, our our entrance ramp leading into the the building. There were, I think, we had several close calls last year with people slipping on that ramp. Thankfully, nobody, nobody fell. But I think it's it's really something we got to make sure that when the cold weather comes here again, that we are we're ready and that that ramp is not slippery. I have a Mason coming in and because there's several issues with it, the there's some damage to it from water freezing on it. And I have a Mason coming to look at that. But the the big thing is that it's it's very, very slippery. So I have purchased a a couple gallons of clear coat with grit in it. That's specially meant for this surface. So hopefully, once this gets repaired and I put that grit down, it will it will fix any 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 problems and help me sleep at night because that's really worrisome to me, having that ramp you know, be icy in in the winter. And if there's anything the board could do to help out, I think, right now, I would appreciate everybody getting word out for National Night Out. Tell everybody, you know, we're trying to spread the word as much as we can and get make make Plington residents aware that this is happening because because we want them all to come and have a good time. So like I said, thank you. That was the 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 shortlist of of things that are going on. But like I said, there's lots more, too. And if anybody wants to come by the library, I'm happy to take you for a tour and and talk about some of the things that we're doing here.
Well, thank you, Mike, very much. That was that was great, very informative, lots of good stuff happening at the library.
Yes.
Wonderful. John or Mark, do you have any questions for Mike?
Only appreciation. Micah here, great things from multiple sources. It's so reassuring to have dedicated, talented leadership, especially in our little town. So really, really appreciate it. This idea, this library of things, this expanding of lending library, I say this, I think, mostly tongue in cheek, but it makes me think about a library that lends bright ideas or wholesome value. I think there's a whole other level here that it opens up. So thank you for a nice kind of happy contemplation about other possibilities like.
Oh, sure.
Well done.
Thank you. And that I always tell people that, you know, libraries change, you know, we libraries have been around for thousands of years because we adapt. And I think this is just something, something new that we we're changing to the times and we're 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 bringing in things that that, you know, new things that people want. So glad to be a part of it.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Hey, I had a question for you. On the National Night Out, Liz, have we we promoted that on the the towns page?
It's on the Town Facebook. It's on the Libraries Facebook. Please, it's it's out there.
Okay, and Mike, this is open. You don't have to be there four to seven. It's for someone like me, I work until five. I probably couldn't be there until 5:30. So you can come and go as as you please and and go through and see all of the vendors and the events.
Yep, you can come and go as as you please. Like I said, it starts at at 4:30 and goes to 7:30, but you can come for as long or or as little as you want. One thing, in case there are some public watching, how to get here. Obviously, there's very limited parking in this area. So what we've done is we set up two satellites parking areas. So Dennett Elementary and also Tractor Supply Parking Lot will be available for people to park. It will have shuttles that'll be going from four until eight back and forth to to bring people to and fro. The library lot is can also be available for drop off and pickup. So if if people are just dropping off some passengers, they can pull into the lot, drop them off, and then go park for anybody who who may have limited mobility. The Town Hall Parking Lot can be used right by the flagpole. Just pull up, drop them off there and and then and then go park.
I believe there were going to be golf carts that would take them up to the field so that there there'll be a big tent with seating and.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have a I believe the Fire Chief will be will be running the golf carts or somebody from the Fire Department will run the golf carts. So, you know, we'll we'll have the ability to to move people around.
This is really exciting. It's this is I hope this is going to be a major win. I I peek in at the meeting sometime, keep my mouth shut because these people really have done stellar work. And Mike, you were the initiator of this, and I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And I a lot of credit needs to go to to Chief All and Chief Silva as well. When they when they jumped in on this, it really went from zero to 100 really quick. So it's, you know, like I said, it's a it's a joint effort. And like, like I said, it sets a good precedent for the future, I think, to working together.
Yes, may I add one thing? It's free.
Sure, Bree, go ahead.
There will be parking at the church as well. And they'll also be parking at the by the post office in between K. Katie's and the post office, if people would like to park along there.
Yeah. So there are so there are limited spots available there. So if you get here early enough, you can probably grab a spot at the the church behind the library here or over by the post office and then and then walk down. But there there won't be a shuttle from those areas, but they're close enough where I think most people can walk.
Beautiful.
One thing you haven't mentioned is the dunk tank.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna make a point to say another way that the the Selectman could help us out is, you know, people love seeing Selectman go in the dunk tank. So
I guess we're signed up.
Throw that out there.
So has John already signed up for that?
I'm signed up.
Yep.
What about Mark?
Um, I I sort of said I was.
Oh, no, you said yes.
Oh, Bree, I thought you were my friend.
How cold's the water in the dunk tank?
We're gonna make it extra cold. We're gonna put in some ice and.
Oh, beautiful. Beautiful. Well, if I'm able to get up there, I'd be willing to do my share, too, because I'm certainly or sure that there are plenty of people that would love to dunk me as well.
Dress appropriately.
Yeah. Yeah, dress appropriately. No kidding. Oh, my goodness. And I think we're supposed to have some decent weather. We're gonna break get a break from this heat, which will be wonderful. So one less thing to worry about, people overheating. So fantastic. Great. Well, thank you so much for all your efforts, Mike. It's truly appreciated and very exciting to hear about all the wonderful things happening at the library.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll see you Friday night.
Yep, Friday night.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And do you want me to stay on there? Because I think we're doing a the trustee appointment next.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so Mike, you're recommending that we appoint Rebecca Archibald?
Yep.
As library trustee until the May town election?
Yeah. So we we had a really odd situation with our with our trustees at the last election. There were there were three spots open. There was a three-way tie for two of the spots. So that meant nobody got those two spots. There was one person elected to the three-year spot, but that person failed to respond to notices from the clerk's office if they wanted the position or not. So it kind of left us in a in a difficult position. I didn't want to appoint anybody without input from the new then trustee that was elected, but we were waiting to hear from the from the trustee that was elected, which we never did. So I think at this point, it's it's been long enough where we can start making some appointments to the board. So Becky is a a regular library user. I see her in here at least once a week, usually more. She has young kids that use the library. She's she's invested in in this this building. And she's also run a number of free programs for us here over the last last couple of months as well. So I think she'd be a perfect appointment to the board trustees.
Yeah, I support this. The library's been operating without a quorum of the board, and this will give them the power to have a quorum. So it's long overdue.
All right, Mark, any questions or concerns?
No concerns.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion that we appoint Rebecca Archibald as a library trustee until the May town election.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy? Yes, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
All right. All right. Very good. Well, thank you so much, Mike. And we look forward to seeing you on Friday night.
Yep, Friday night. Hope to see you all there.
All right. Take care. Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
All right. So next item on the agenda is approval for posting of warrant for 2022 state primary election. So Liz, you provided us with the documents that Tricia had given you.
Correct. So the first vote would be, let me just pull it up here. You would be taking a vote to approve the posting of the warrant for the primary town election in September.
Okay. John or Mark, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the posting of the warrant for the primary election as provided by the town clerk.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. And then Liz, did you need us to approve early voting hours?
Yes. So the next vote will be to approve early voting hours for the primary election as provided by the town clerk. I can read them off if you want, and then you can just move it that way.
That sounds great.
Okay, so Saturday, August 27, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday, August 29, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 30, Wednesday, August 31, and Thursday, September 1, all 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Friday, September 2, by appointment only, and people would need to contact the clerk's office to set up an appointment for that. So you would be taking a vote to approve those early voting hours.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the early voting hours provided by the town clerk and read by Liz.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. And then you we've got some police details?
Yeah. So if you wanted to take the next two agenda items together, basically, this is to accept changes to the law regarding scheduling police details on Election Day. And then also to designate the police chief as the appointing authority of police details for elections, which is always the chief has typically been the appointing authority. So basically, you're acknowledging the changes to the law. And then you're also designating or or redesignating him so that he can coordinate those police details as opposed to the Selectman's Office trying to do that. So it would be, I can read the suggested motion that the clerk's office provided.
Okay.
Um, it would be to move that the Board of Selectmen vote for the recently passed Votes Act, Section 72 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, to assign a sufficient number of police officers at the polling location on September 6, 2022, to preserve order and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections. And further move to designate the police chief and his or her designee as the appointing authority of police details for all future elections, assigning specific police officers according to scheduling and availability.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve or approve that emotion as read by Liz and suggested by the town clerk.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. Are we all set with those, Liz?
Yes.
All right. All right. So John Dennett Rooftop Solar Project, approval of lease and power purchase agreement. Liz, did you or John Wilhamsen want to speak on this?
We don't. Unfortunately, we're we're still not ready. We had hoped that we would be in a position this evening that you could take a vote on these documents. But I believe that the attorneys are still working out some of the details. So we're going to do our best to try to expedite things as much as possible so that we can get this across the finish line and move forward. So it's looking like we need to pass over this tonight and put it on the next agenda for approval.
All right, thank you. And I was gonna be, but we're not there, but hopefully we'll be next time.
Yes.
Well, that's.
I know that's getting a bit old that we keep saying that, but we're very hopeful. We're very.
One of these days, we're almost there.
Did we record at the beginning when they told us how easy this was gonna be? No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Nothing.
Well, we'll hopefully get there very shortly.
But better to take longer and have the the right document. So we can have ourselves protected. We'll get there.
We did. We did have a very good call with Select and. We did. We did have a very good call with Select and our attorney, you know, a couple of weeks ago, which is why we were very hopeful. So that was that was a positive breakthrough. And and if we're still here a week from now, we're going to have another one of those calls. So.
Okay, and another breakthrough?
I'm not promised.
All right. So we'll we'll pass over that and hopefully have that ready for our next meeting. Bree, can you report on warrants paid?
Yes, two hundred four thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. And as far as we paid the nine one one to the rock communication there.
Okay.
For that fight so much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bree. All right, Liz, any town administrators update?
Um, yes, I have a few items. We are awaiting bids for the fire department's Engine One refurbishment project. Bids are due on Wednesday. So hopefully, we get in multiple bids and they are affordable for us because we only have a certain amount of funds allocated for this. We had put it out to bid last year, and it didn't go anywhere for financial reasons. So the chief reconfigured the big package, took some things out, and we're hopeful that this can get the project done for the amount that we have appropriated. I'm working with Bree. We're going to be setting up a public hearing likely for your September 12 meeting for EverSource for some upcoming poll installations. So more on that. And we're also waiting to hear back on a few different pending grant applications. And we just completed paperwork for one with the state. So things are moving forward on that. And I'm also happy to announce that the Soul Homestead project with the lease with Middleborough and all of that has finally come to closure. The lease agreement has been recorded at the registry, and we are done and on record. So onward to some new projects, but that's a really great project. So that's a that's a win for the town.
It's a win, win, win.
Yes, yes. A win all the way around. And then I apologize, I had a request in my notes from the garden club for use of town property. I believe that they wanted to sell some plants on the town green, but I don't see the date anywhere in my in my email. Bree, do you recall what that date was?
I think it's September 3.
It's their plant sale. I want to say that this particular meeting, like we have another meeting before that.
Liz, I think it's a flower show. So the plant sale we had in May, I think this is going to be more of a.
Floral?
Yeah, let me.
It's September 3, 11 to 1.
And we have another meeting in between, but when we see them come in, we like to mention them at the meetings to get the approval process underway. So what we can do is circulate that to the other people who sign off, and then I can bring it back at your next one, just to formalize it, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
And then otherwise, I think we've talked about National Night Out. That's kind of the big thing on everybody's agenda and can't say enough good things about the people who have been heavily involved in it. Mike Lawson, Matt All, Chief Silva, Bree, Rob Furley, everybody's working really hard. So should be a good night.
I was gonna just quickly read down what's going to be in the National Night Out. So they're going to have it in the police parking lot, the fields, the whole fields, the town hall, and the library lawn and the fire department. So in the police parking lot, a dunk tank, kids ID cards, motorcycle demo, police vehicles, Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney, Tim Cruz, raffle items on the fields, heina art, balloon art, canine demonstrations, impaired vision experience, food, Plymouth County, WIC, what's WIC, Elizabeth?
I believe that's WIC. Isn't that Women Infant and Children's, at least?
Okay. At the town hall, fire vehicles and live music, which will be a band, which will be underneath the main entrance of the town hall, on the library lawn, crafts for kids, and face painting and on the at the fire department, and indoor movie. And they will also be cooking food to go supplement the taco and ice cream trucks and whatever else shows up. So amazing cooperation from these groups to put this together.
Very exciting.
Bree, Bree did send me that date. So if you want to do the vote now, just so that we're not leaving it until the last minute, it's for the garden club on September 3 for the flower show.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the garden club to use the, you said it's the town green?
Yes.
Yes.
For the flower show, September 3, 11 to 1, I think that was the the time they said. Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
They will also have a food truck. Hello?
Hello.
They will also be, they'll also be having a food truck. To let you know.
Okay, excellent.
Working with the Board of Health on that. It's fine.
Beautiful. All right. So with all of the the usual stipulations, sign off by all the other departments. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. So let's see. So we are on two minutes. Did everyone get a chance to read Bree's minutes from 7:25?
Yes.
All right, any modifications? Comments, changes?
Not for me.
Okay, John, anything?
The modification that I made, Bree is incorporated and sent out. So if that's the one we're voting on, I'm fine. Okay.
Bree, so you you made the changes that the John and Mark and and I suggested on these?
Sure did. And then we sent them to you as a.
Beautiful. Okay. All right. So then they're spot on. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 7:25 as submitted.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. So we're at Rants and Raves. So our next meet or Raves, excuse me, our next meeting is 8:22 and then.
Christine?
Yeah.
We're going to do, I think, 8:29 with the understanding that if the Denit solar documents are ready to go, we could convene a special meeting for that the week of the 22nd if we needed to.
Okay, so our next meeting will be 8:29, and then we'll be meeting in September after Labor Day. Okay, perfect. Okay, Selectmen's Raves.
So my rave is National Night Out, the work that these groups have been done. I think you've heard them. It should be fabulous. And I'm not on till 7 o'clock in the Dunk Machine because I'm working till 6:30.
Oh, you only have a half an hour, John. You plan that well. Poor Mark, he's gonna get gone.
Hour, I wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah. I like the early slot. So I I thought I had a a political rave, and but I I think I'll save it for another time because such a lovely meeting tonight, hearing about National Night Out. I love the expansion of the scope of lending library and just kind of the enthusiasm, the excitement of innovation. It was a pleasure coming to this meeting. So that's my rave.
Well, it's a good thing that both the Johns were on the call because if that thing part of the library, we could need an addition. You may need it. Need a bigger building. My rave is John Trainer, and it's the your first and third Saturday program at the library. You know, you had an idea, you wanted to get information out. That's what has been key, I think, to your your being a selectman. And and you made it happen, and you've really done a great job with it. And it's now an important part of the library, as you know, Mike said. So well done, John.
I appreciate that. I would invite both of you. Mark, maybe you would want to come and speak on CPC. And Christine, if you would want to speak on affordable housing or anything else you think. But the people are very willing to hear. And John has been there a couple of times, and I know the reaction has been extremely positive. So I'll send you a letter.
Yeah, that would be great, John.
I'm glad glad to be an ambassador for CPC, and it's a nice juicy topic. Glad to talk about that.
Great, great.
John, how long do these segments usually last at the library?
We call them 10 minute briefings. We don't have any slides. It's just the speaker getting up and talk. And basically, they go on as long as people have questions, which usually means they run at least a half an hour, sometimes 45 minutes. And the people are involved, as John can testify.
It's an engaged group. And there's, you know, there's always some good questions, and it's not forced, which is really nice. You know, it's you sort of prepare your 10 minutes, and then you see where it takes you from there. And and I've I've been I've been there twice, and I'm happy to go back as as needed to give them the updates. And they they're hungry for the information. And so I think it's a great opportunity. It's, you know, it's a it's a, you know, it's a smaller set, you know, it's a segment of our town, but it, hey, people are interested, why not? Why not give it to them, you know?
Absolutely. It's a great forum to disseminate accurate information right from the horse's mouth. So perfect, very.
You might want to come there to protect what I say. Mike's taking over. I'm not talking anymore.
All right. So that's it for us for tonight. So I'll make a motion that we adjourn, and we will see everyone at National Night Out Friday night, 4 to 7:30 at the up at the town hall and and the town campus up there. Lots of great things going on, and hopefully, we've got a lot of people to join us for some fun and camaraderie. So thank you very much. All right. So motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night.